See, honestly, that hands in a miserable spot here.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at the button.
Fold? I I I'm never folding this combo, by the way, on the button.
No, I don't.
And four, I mean.
I'm raising.
It's in there. Now, it's in there. Jack three, ten, four, nine, five. That slope on that corner.
So. Two, two, seven. And we have like, pretty trashy hand. A kinda, uh, my instinct is like, either just kinda check give up or bet larger, like four, but it's a paired board, so.
Pair board, but it's a low pair board, so I think.
Right, that's kinda where I'm at too, Joss, is um, it's a low.
If we don't connect with the seven, if eight deuce deuce, then maybe, but uh.
I like that thing because we don't have the backdoor flush, so we can bet fold kind of easily.
Yeah, see, that four, that four was tempting me, but two's good.
Yeah, on the paired boards, it's usually smaller.
Uh, small pair boards are sometimes larger also.
That's not very good, the seven is never folding.
Well, seven. Yeah, I mean, we have the four.
Were were very deep.
We have the four, though. Can you get better? We get like infinite better hands to fold?
Yeah, but that's not really a a card we double barrel on.
Not a lot.
It didn't change top pair.
Yeah, but if you have top pair, we can barrel, I mean.
So if you barrel a seven on the, if you barrel a seven on the flop, you're gonna definitely barrel a seven on the turn here. I don't know, I'm kind of, I'm torn between check, give up and go even bigger, like that. That eight point four is kinda calling my name here.
Mid check.
Five point five, okay.
That's all close, so it means that it has probably better hands to bluff.
Now we have like a miserable spot here.
It's tempting to try to bluff this.
Barrel hands with gutshot flush blockers, yeah, yeah, I I agree to. Seven's almost too much, I mean, I guess maybe we would target his auto fold. Well, hold on, okay, so this is a bet call, check, check line, right? So I think we're probably gonna be super polarized.
Yeah, still a lot of air.
I don't know, man, like, this is.
Are we ever gonna get ace high to fold?
Yeah. Well, he's also, he shouldn't have a a ton of ace high here.
He can have jack ten even.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, see, I'm okay with this, it's just.
The king is too good for the button and then. Yeah, that that's why I wanted to bluff it, I just wasn't sure what the size. We just get better hands to fold. This.
Oh, look, they they're doing the Odin thing now. They're making you wait.
Maintain a fair poker environment, right?
Saw this yesterday, I I was afraid of that, sucks.
Just block it. River strategy. The five is also, okay, I thought about five as well. Five seems to be more value-ish, kind of. The worst kings, the under, under. Seven X.
Yeah, all your bad bad hands, eight, six, eight, five, eight, four. Nine, six, nine, five, ten, six.
Yeah.
All your garbage.
This part here just goes for it. Club less. Oh, clubs are going for it.
Yeah, they're all going for it.
Ace, eight, folding an ace. Sixty big blinds. You bet small? Or do you bet larger? I would bet two point two, I think, cuz it's paired.
They even check sometimes.
We're we're kind of deep, so it doesn't mind.
Yeah. Or go, it doesn't mind going one point three either.
Yeah, it fits in all categories as a trap also.
Alright, so raise.
Is this the hand we check?
No, I don't wanna check it. Vulnerable, I'm torn between just a typical small bet here and a. Kinda going big, I think because we have the flush draw, we probably still lean small.
Small, smaller, smaller.
Alright, now we're gonna polarize. Let's give like an eight point four or something.
Twelve.
Twelve is probably reasonable, to be honest.
Wow. Why twelve?
Well, the seven doesn't really improve any direct equity, it adds a lot of draws, another flush draw comes in.
Are you betting for value or are you polarizing with your draw?
Where, I mean, we have top pair, it's it's a value bet. And like.
Think it's a bit thin? The quality of our top pair is a bit thin, I don't know. Yeah, I think twelve is too high for the value of our hand.
Oh, no, man, that's.
Nah, I like eight, I like eight, I like eight. You guys wanna blast it? Sure.
Yeah, there's two incomplete straight draws and two incomplete flush draws, so it's gonna be a bet-heavy board.
Right, so there's gonna be hands that, uh, there's lots of gutshots that actually have equity now. Or, and like, there's, I don't know, if eight, nine of hearts somehow floats. Seven, six may be in there, something like that, seven, five.
Yeah, better tens are going higher, but I I think our hand is just a bit too weak to value bet that large.
I mean, on the merits of it just being a, just being a ten, five, sure, but we have like, we have the spades, so.
Yeah, but we're supposed to play our actual value and not our potential value.
Yeah, I mean, they both play, they both play a role in our sizing there, like, if you go back to ten, if you go back to ten, five, or whatever we had. You'll look at like, the ones without a flush. Yeah, so look, like, you see, like, the ones without a flush draw? Are mainly checking, and the one with the flush draw is doing a lot of betting. So it's one of those things, it's like, yeah, like, we we are playing the actual hand strength, but the the flush complaint definitely influences our decision tree here.
Yeah, if he has a better ten, he can still outkick him of a draw, man, that's that's the reason.
So without the flush draw, it would be a check.
Yeah, majority for sure, I think so, cuz it's a scary board, right?
Yeah.
So we can.
Less game because we have two spades.
Uh, I go one point nine five here a lot, I wouldn't be surprised to see a little bit more.
Yes, there's two key card for the big blind here, we can't just, we need to polarize, for sure.
Okay.
Was in a good direction, early.
Yeah, it was. I think the ten may be interesting here, because if he's got like eight, nine, you're kind of blocking his out, so it's like. There's some like, Jack ten off is like a special combo here compared to the other ones.
It's going five a lot with most of the jack, right?
Yeah.
Even, okay, so it's eighty percent box blasting.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're, yeah, it's what you said, uh, with the the key card situation and the fact that it's a rainbow board, there's like no direct flush draws.
Yeah.
Probably pushing our bet size up quite a bit. I need to find more of this kinda stuff in my game, uh, to be truthful.
I mean, I knew that the motion, but still wrong side.
You can probably just put this guy in at some point, but uh, I think it's gonna be calling like, maybe a jam.
I'm kicking it back.
I don't hate that.
I would call.
I was torn between, I was torn between call and jam.
Yeah, the turn's not gonna bring a good card for us either way, so.
It does everything.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Raise. Uh, man, you might be able to call this, sometimes I just fold this, so. Okay, okay, Joker.
Last time. Okay, so now we need to go like five or seven.
Yeah, seven, seven is an interesting one.
Yeah. Let's go seven.
Yeah, I kinda wanna play seven just cuz I usually don't play this, you gotta check now, like, that's when he calls.
Nope, you have to bet.
It's like king is a perfect card to double barrel. Our range is doing that.
I mean, I don't know how many bets Jack she has, actually, huh?
King tar, you just blast because it's a key card for imposition.
See, the the concerning thing about this is, like, in game, if you find one point five X and somebody just smooth calls. On the flop, like, what? That makes me really nervous, cuz I'm like, alarm bells are going off, right?
Okay, you can have a lot of draws, I mean.
We're in the pickle here, I would love to have a spade to make this call.
Uh, the four is really bad, actually, like, so straights get there, flushes get there, like. What is he calling with on the flop too? I don't know, man, I prob, it's gonna tell you to bluff catch this, I bet.
We're out of the tree cuz. We're no man's land, cuz we, the check on the turn was not good.
Yeah, snap panic checked.
That's why you don't check on the turn.
Okay, so now we blast the turn.
Give up, everything came in.
You you can't, you can't fold this hand now, it doesn't matter what happens at.
Well, not, he che, he checked to us.
He checks, so we check back.
So we can check back for showdown.
Even go all in.
Jack deuce.
Street bet thing.
He only has two.
We've done this three times with the same flop, but seven point four.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, uh, you're repeating the answer, yeah.
That's small. Wow, it sizes up, that's interesting.
Yeah, it's betting all over the board.
I think, uh, monotone board size up.
I would have checked on this board, why?
I never check.
Because it's monotone imposition, that thing you need to guard up. Cuz that, that looks like a much better board for the big blind.
Why? What hits him on this board?
I don't understand why you think that, but if you look at like the aggregated reports for monotone boards typically, um, it's basically a range bet.
I haven't seen any aggr, aggregated reports in like a year.
Oh, well, they would help you out, um, if you look at them.
Cuz I was, I was sick and I wasn't even looking at poker.
Yeah, I got you. Well, like, a typical motion on a monotone board is, um, it's just gonna be a range bet small typically.
Okay, even if the ca, even if the card range ranks are smack the big blind.
Yeah, but this cartridge doesn't smack the big blind.
Well, I I understand what you're saying, and I think that reason that you're saying that is why we're seeing a few larger sizes here. That's why I was kinda surprised, like, we typically just bet small on monotone boards, but I would imagine because it's like middle, low, low. Is why we, um, it's polarizing smidge.
The big blind doesn't have all fours, not all threes, we have also all the nines. So the big blind doesn't smash this board, he has a lot of draws with, uh, because he has fives and sixes.
Yeah, yeah. I I'm just mer- merely speaking to the fact that it's it's starting to polarize a little bit, right? You see that little bit of check coming in, you see that little bit of big betting coming in.
Yeah, I mean, if the board is like eight, six, five, then you probably have even more checks.
See, so that should be the overall strategy. On the sixty-two monotone boards that I ran, I ran from ace high to six high. Then didn't run the low monotone boards, although on seven high, it starts to size up, it seems.
It's our three different cards, so there are no two high or three high or four high, yeah, four high, four three two there is, but.
So these don't exist in monotone, right?
Uh, not a lot.
Maybe there's one, four.
You flop a straight flush, right, like, five, four, three, or four, three deuce, like, it's like one or two combos.
Might be missing one or two samples there, but there's almost nothing, so in general, the strategy for impositions to bet small. So, bet, uh. So in general, on monotone boards, uh, this is gonna be. Gonna do, this is our betting strategy for imposition. So ace high board, we almost bet any two, king eye board. Uh, we bet, right, eighty percent range, queen eye is different, it's a different broadway, because, uh, the big blind defends every queen. And the button doesn't open every queen, so it's a bit more of a neutral card, jack eye boards are really good. Ten eye are starting to. Also, ten eye boards, actually, you know, on nine eye and eight eye boards, that's where you kinda start to see like big bets. And like on a nine eye board, it's gonna be like your pocket tens, pocket jacks, stuff like that. Like, the lower your pair gets, the more you get, on eight eye boards, you're gonna have pocket nines and pocket tens. So the the polarizing frequencies goes up, kind of.
Also more straights for the big blind, uh, straight ones.
Yeah, and unlike a seven high board, you do have some small bets, but you wanna bet big a lot. And put the guys in close. So that's what we should be seeing, and so that's why it's a bit shocking to see a nine high monotone board, where we bet big. But, yeah. Now the question is, strategy plus EV. Yeah, it seems to be kind of a.
And this is also eighty big blinds, that's how you bet bigger than normal.
Yeah, that's a, that's another consideration.
I thought we were at forty, my bad, I don't think, yeah, my bad, I don't think I have much.
Forty, you bet small, and eighty, you bet bigger.
Maybe I do, maybe I do. Let's see.
And we can also look in GTO visit that aggregate report, uh, no.
Yeah, but the reports from my friend Yoss are better. Alright, let's see here, monotone, monotone, monotone.
I don't see it.
Just get used to GTO visit more, uh. Yeah, because it's, I I can read them fine now, I mean, I also had to get used to it.
It's the same behavior we just saw, it's just like.
Yeah.
The 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 polarization is a little more exaggerated, like, where we checked before, we checked more now. Where we bet big before, we bet bigger now, or more frequently.
Yeah, alright, let's move on.
Alright, outta here, you got us.
You got us, he plays well against us.
He likes to give us jack ten.
Ooh, this is a.
Small.
This is kinda, this is kinda of a.
Yeah, two are not, uh, deep, so.
Maybe this short, we start to call more and more with this count.
No, I think not.
It's actually the opposite, you fold it now, where you were calling before.
No, we were folding before, but now.
You had a thirty percent call frequency before.
Nope.
Go look at it.
Sure. What size do you want?
The ones we were looking at before.
Forty.
Fifty.
Okay, you can maybe call that, Anthony, I don't know. Playable hands favor deep stacks if you're in position, for sure.
I don't like this one.
We have an eight. We'll block the blasts.
Yeah, you're right, eight, eight's particularly bad. Raise. You can probably bet big here sometimes. But we're only, we're only twenty-five effective, though, is my only issue here.
No, it's gonna be a bad small, I think.
Uh, three point five is big now.
Hmm, it's a bit big.
Jam is a bluff? I don't know, dude.
You have completely no backdoors, you have one backdoor actions, sorry.
Think we're blocking some of his bluffs too.
He's semi bluffing a lot, huh?
Yeah, it should be folding.
Normally.
Raise.
Okay, maybe some in details with it.
What are these weird donking spots? I just maybe haven't looked at, I haven't looked at enough small blind donking, cuz this just doesn't seem like it's ever a donk to me.
Yeah, but the small blind has a lot of, uh, medium cards if he calls, huh?
Yeah, I feel like flushes are probably pretty equal, though, right? Like, it's not like there's a big equity shift with flushes. Just as an interesting.
Can you look at, uh, pre for calling range, Louis, so that you can see what he has? See, all those, uh, green on the right side of the graph. The blocks, so there's a lot of greens, queen nine, G ten nine, ace nine, a lot suits. Yeah, it's hitting his range, jack ten seven, that's that's the problem.
If you need GTO wizard, the kind of place.
Five, three. No? That's, that's in there.
I would raise it.
Yeah.
Uh, do we need to turn bottom pair into a bluff here ever?
No.
Yeah, I think so.
Let's, uh. I was gonna say, is this a, uh, would you call this a value bet? Like, what are you, what are you getting value from?
Ace high. A lot, a lot of draws, huh?
My guess was that we were gonna go, since there's two broadway, we're gonna size up a little bit here.
And also from, uh, denying equity from a lot of hands, huh?
We just arrange betting any two cards small.
But we deny equity from any two cards.
Right, yeah, so it's just a range bet small.
Yeah.
The old king ten three rainbow.
Well, I think that's a, it's a good one. I'm getting caught here. Checking too much.
Well, if you check the flop, I definitely wanna check the turn now.
Yeah, you check back again, so.
Oh, wow, let's change it, let's say we bet. Cause, uh.
Okay. Uh, man, I don't.
Now we just have a pair of three, I mean.
Yeah, I like checking too. If he checks on the river, though.
Oh.
I kinda like raise, I like raise.
How big do we go?
Do we go nine? Six or nine?
Better two pairs, the straight.
It was a good thing, I was about to say, good thing we don't have two pair, and we got trips.
Oh. Somehow.
Value from two pair.
Definitely.
I like niners, I think nine's good, sixteen's crazy.
Nine is good.
Almost.
Yeah. We can bet this one.
Yeah, of course. Eight.
Uh, ace high, dry, disconnected rainbow is typically a range that's small.
Yeah. Can go all sides.
Yeah.
Okay. Raise is a bluff?
Hmm.
I know it's crazy.
If it's suited, maybe.
Uh. This is a check, I think, I mean, this is like Jack ten, two-tone connected, like, there's straights available. I think, uh, I think we kinda wanna slow it down here, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we check here. The other bet big or check, so this is.
A jack eye board.
It is.
We're gonna have to bet most of the time.
It's too connected, I think, Louis, too, uh, better.
It may be, I mean, like.
Maybe seventy percent or so, could be, but.
I agree, but we still need to find a better most of the time.
Okay, I think I.
Typically, you had that can check.
I like checking, I like checking with a chip.
I think I would check.
I'll check as well, but I'm trying to talk myself into betting, I mean.
I hear it, I hear you. I don't know if, uh.
There's also checking a lot.
If we add the spade, can we check a bit more? I think so.
That's a good, that's a good question.
Plus then we can bluff on the.
I think I would be more inclined to bet with a spade.
And sizing up with the spade.
I would do it the other way around, you mean, but that's wrong, probably.
Now, see, now the queen is pretty good, although it's kind of a quick card, because he has a lot of them. What queen does he defend? So he calls all of them, especially with the spade.
There's flush draws, there's a nine that makes a straight, like. I think checking is probably. The way to go here.
Or is this the hand we bluff? We're blocking nine. Ice king.
You wanna check, huh?
Yeah, honestly.
My hand into a bluff, but it's probably not the best time to bluff.
Wanna bet?
I definitely wanna check here.
Clear check.
I, I think it's either check or eight point four. Oh, it's giving up.
I don't even think it's giving up, I think it's just, uh, I think it's just managing the pot. Okay, I think we can, uh, we can definitely bet big here, maybe seven point five?
Oh, that's too small, oh no.
Now, it's perfect, cuz there are flushes out there too, it sound like we have the nuts.
Ah, two pair.
Bet. I'm raising this. But I'm too wide.
No, I think king five is the bottom there. King five or king six.
King five, I think, depends on stack size, actually.
Okay, so this is, this is that board we were talking about, this is high, high, low monotone. Probably a range bet small spot here, I would think, what do you think, Louis?
Yeah.
Pretty much, uh, range, you know, almost. Uh, do you bet again to control the pot?
Wow.
Do you bet again, do, maybe five point four, three point two?
You have a medium strength ten, so why would you bet?
In general, on monotone boards, imposition can range bet. But there's some like a guideline that says, we need to dodge the board pairing. So if the five comes, we can't double barrel, if a king comes, can't double barrel. And that, if the flush comes, we can't double barrel.
Not for our total range, I think.
So I think it's a heavy checker.
Yeah, so like, the way I'm thinking about this is, if we check, we're gonna have a very hard time winning this pot on the river versus any kind of bet. So, I was thinking maybe like, take a double barrel and then maybe check back river. Line, and we just generate fold equity sometimes, I don't know if that's gonna be, I don't know if that's gonna be an approved line.
Yeah, but no worse sense of fault. Only worse sense of fault, no better has the fault, I have to say.
I used to get very out of line on these monotone boards, and I made a good point of studying them, that.
And I guess maybe right, uh, Galen, huh?
Really has to do with the nature of the turn. We just need to dodge a spade or the board pairing and then we can double barrel almost every time.
So check, just check it back. I would be interested to run that one again, but yeah, it's not a big deal.
I'm sorry.
Uh. It's okay, just don't let it happen again, okay? Small.
Small. How small?
I'm a two point two guy, my two point two guy, myself.
Or ones, I decide I was gonna.
Oh, wait a minute, seven is uh, we don't have sevens in this range and a big blind, a small blind. We're against the small blinds. You're not against the big blind.
He's gonna have some sevens, but it's not like a lot.
Yeah, not a lot. A small blind hasn't either a lot of sevens, so.
This is a situ, alright, so we got queen high rainbow, like there's some low connection there, not a ton. I feel like this is a spot where you might do some range betting, but if we had a hand that wanted to check, I think this might be it.
Queen high is the one we range bet the least in the broadways.
Yeah.
And it's a check.
We have second fair, I think we need to bet. That's a check.
Or should we check?
Check again?
Bluff catch, oh.
No, thank you.
Oh, we have a lot of better.
So, let's think about this. What is he uh repping here? This is like a really polar line. So it's like he's saying he's got the nuts.
Yeah, he has a straight.
Four, five, ten, nine, uh.
We don't really have.
Shits.
We don't really have relevant blockers to a straight. Uh.
Jack is banned, dude.
We don't have blocks to flop to, to pair. Uh, they have two pair.
What is the worst hand that we are bluff catching here?
Uh, well, we got plenty of queens, we got every queen, we got every eight X in our range.
Those aren't bluff catches. Come on, give us, give us like a polar one. What's, what's like an interesting?
What do you mean?
Six nine.
Eight X is a fine bluff catcher. He bets over five. What do you mean?
Okay, so which eight X are we calling? Ace eight? You calling ace eight? You calling jack eight?
The ones without the good blockers, so like uh, I'm calling like five, five eight.
Five eight's an interesting one. I think five eight is a good one. I think any pair with five is probably gonna be good.
And a nine, eight, nine.
That's her.
I think anything with a nine's gonna be good too. So like if you got. I don't know, three nine or something. Calls, it calls.
Yeah.
Oh, it's crazy.
Good luck with that move.
Oh, come on, we're GTO until it doesn't conveniently fit your narrative. Let's check it out, let's see.
Who, who do you know bets two X pot on the river and then you get called with six X?
I can't tell you the last time I played a check, 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 check.
Well, you know what? At least we had it figured out that Jack is like uh. A good blocker here, but the.
But nine six is actually folding a lot. Interesting.
So king six is.
The nine is not a good, not the best blocker.
See, I, I had it backwards. I thought nine was gonna be better than jack here, but I guess.
Yes, sure I.
You're blocking.
Five is the best blocker.
You're blocking the bluffs at that point. It's kind of what, like you need him to be like going bananas with some of these blocker cards, I guess.
Anyway, that's kind of what I thought because we're on the button, we have a lot of eight X to call with.
Yeah, eight's, yeah, eight, I, I figured eight would make good sense. Like eight, ten, okay, eight.
Even nine eight is folding a lot, huh?
Yeah, so the, I think the takeaway is you don't want one of these straight blockers with a ten or a nine.
Probably, you know what? Because he's probably using nine X to bluff.
Yeah, I think so too.
Even queen nine is folding.
Right, so look at it. Look at his nines, look at his tens. So, I mean, that's where you're seeing some of the shenanigans coming from, like ten, nine.
Oh, I see, here is eights and sevens.
Look at the nine.
No, 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 no. Look at the nines here.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
Ten nine is straight, and queen nine is uh top pair.
What, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Oh wait, you're sorry, I'm sorry, Josh, you're right. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Um, so it would be like.
These.
He's turning nine five, which is a straight. He's turning nine four, nine deuce.
Nine deuce.
Nine deuce, right?
Nine deuce, yep, yep. Jack deuce is kinda going bananas.
It's picking a lot more of the two six than than anything else.
See, stuff like this at the table, there's no way. It, it's gonna be almost impossible to figure this out at the table with the timer.
No, but we can maybe figure out just the general motion, like here.
I think Louis is right, yeah.
Having like a.
Oh yeah.
Your hand is probably very bad on the river.
But, but go back and queen, queen nine is a. Oh no, queen nine's all in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought queen nine was white for a second.
Yeah.
Looks good. Yeah, it's interesting hand. These are, these are spots where it's like, I don't know. It's interesting to learn how they work, but I would be very careful implementing that in game. Be very careful.
King I board, flush draw.
Yeah, Timmy, it looks like it was, I think you saw.
So one.
Answer your question.
I have close.
Yep, seems good. Uh, we can probably slow down here, yeah?
For darn. Yeah.
Or go really big. Um, do we need to turn this into a bluff?
No, we can bin.
Then check.
You can bin at showdown.
Josh is right. But we can't.
Yeah, we did lose, but uh.
Jack three, it's not in range.
Uh, yes, it is.
I'm betting this, I'm raising.
Yeah, I bet this.
Queen two, jack three, ten four, nine five is the slope on that side.
Uh.
That big.
So, is this one that we wanna start betting big with? If we don't, we unblock the backdoor.
Bottom not the hunt that we bet big.
We unblock it literally.
This is a.
I think it's a low, because we have top low.
Exactly. We need to bet small, we're too strong.
Sure.
Oh, if, if nine comes, we uh.
I'm just trying to think of the merits of betting large here, because we unblock literally every kind of drawing hand possible and we have like a pretty strong.
Merit of betting small, we're deep.
Mm-hmm.
But it's like, we're too strong, but I think a lot of, if we had like ace, jack, king, jack, queen, jack, we would.
I think jack nine bets large here.
Eh, in this study we did yesterday with um.
Because it's top two and not.
Crazy sexes and crazy sixes and God's big toe. Um, it was mentioned that top bottom usually bet small.
Jack nine is betting small and large, at least also large.
It's uh, it's what you said, Louis.
No, top, top bottom usually bet small.
Yeah, top bottom is small, or checking sometimes even.
The general range is just betting small, okay, so like, the hands that it's picking to go really polar with. Seem to be like the, the ones that get a lot of better hands to fold.
Yeah, but also jack three's easily outkicked, huh, if he has a jack.
Yeah, if you look at like ace deuce, king deuce.
Jack nine at least uh safe on an eight, seven, six, five, four.
Yeah, I mean, I get, I get a little antsy sometimes in these spots with two pair on a really draw heavy board and I wanna bet big and I'm just trying to under, understand the uh. Trying to correct my logic.
Yeah, but I think it's okay against playable.
Maybe.
Nish, um, on that, on that board, he, he's in um chat.
Oh, I see, I see.
On that board, I would bet almost everything, so I wouldn't have much for checking range.
So Nish, uh, also, you gotta remember we're eighty big blinds deep. Uh, if you check the flop, you're gonna have a really hard time building enough momentum to build that pot, to win a large pot here. And that's what you wanna do with your value range, right?
Yeah, because they don't dunk enough and they don't bet enough and don't raise enough.
Right.
Bet your value.
Very often a pattern that you're gonna see, uh, a hand like king, queen, a spade, for example. Probably benefit from betting small a lot and a hand like king five. Benefits from using bigger size a lot, because this one gets better king to fold, whereas this one does not.
This board does have some checks, but they're all obvious checks, like eights, seven, sixes.
Nine, seven, nine.
Ten nine.
So like it's all more or less always gonna be the same pattern. You're gonna use the eye load, the backdoor flushes. To get, to try, like when you do it with queen six, you bet big with queen six, you're just targeting better queens in your opponent's range, so that if their queen comes, it's clean. Now, I would, we're kind of deep. Is it time to play first stacks, kind of?
I kinda wanna go big here, like I feel like he's gonna be check raising his straight draws, his eight tens, right?
No, it's, it's bigger than, it's bigger than five point five, Louis.
It is. I'm thinking like maybe twelve or twenty or something crazy like that.
I don't know about that.
So you guys are hinting towards eight point four?
I'm between eight point four and twelve.
Twelve or twenty, that's where I was. But I mean, eight point four is obviously a fine answer.
Yeah, you do that stuff?
I do, I do, I actually do do this stuff in game at the stacked up.
I've been working at that re- recently and it's had pretty good results. I'm, I'm actually surprised with some of the people will still call with when you go that big.
They call with a nine. People, people just can't fold value. Alright, so like here, I still, I'm not dissuaded. I wanna go very big here still. Um, I think the, with the way our line went, twenty two is probably the bet. But no, it wants to go all in, so there it is.
Max.
I want value.
So like, I mean, this makes sense, right? There is a lot of bluffs. There is a lot of bluff catchers and we have the polarization advantage, so. I mean.
He pulls the jack. The jack with a good, with a good block.
So if you play this exact same hand and you take like a more polar line on the turn, I bet he ends up having to call this on the river.
Yes, to have an eight or a ten with it, that was a good blocker. And no spade even.
Uh, fold.
Nish, to answer the last question, uh, typically that's how I used to play, but the solver doesn't always go by the, um.
Thirty percent stack roll. Push, right? Uh, Nish, I'm not a hundred percent sure what you mean by that. Are you saying like if you have thirty percent uh? Would, just clarify for me a bit.
Uh, um, Galen, and the old float the turn, uh, before Jonathan started using GTO. Um, he used to say if you're going to bet thirty percent of your stack, you should just shove.
Oh, the all-in threshold, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that doesn't work anymore.
Uh, so, so, in some situations.
It's a, it's a good guideline for a great portion of the tree, especially pre-flop. I think it's a kind of a pre-flop rule, but if you look at bet sizes both flop, it doesn't hold.
Yeah, like uh, it's a little more contextual than that, right?
I think it's like pre-flaps, you're gonna tree bet to somewhere close to a third of your stack, you might as well shove, right? But even that, you know, it's.
If that is not true, uh, some.
Yeah.
It, 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 the, the game has, is more defined now.
Yeah, since the GTO solvers, that's not as concrete of, it's not even valid anymore.
You know, that's, it, what amazes me is like when an old school pro like JL, who won all of his money when there was no solver. Comes up with his old tricks and like eighty percent of them are still very, very accurate. It's like, yeah, he kinda knew it before yeah, the solution was out, you know? But sometimes, you know, for sure, some of the tricks are less useful. Um. I'm gonna.
I think we have to.
My clicking. I mean, I would wanna click for shorter and had a bear kicker, but now I'm just calling.
Yeah, still bit clicking.
Now, now I can flick.
It's not exactly what they're saying, Nish. Um, I mean, these are, these are tools that you put in your toolkit, toolkit to kinda help you make more informed decisions. Um, it's not that it's necessarily outdated. I, I'm not sure it's what they were meaning to say. There's just more sophisticated answers, right? So it's kinda like.
In most situations, it still holds true.
It, it, it's still a thing, but not as high a percentage as it was.
Exactly.
Before the solvers.
Like a general heuristic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's probably a good generalization.
Not gonna work everywhere.
Right, yeah, and it's just like calculating pot odds and things like that real time, you know, those are useful tools, like when you're at the table. But you know, there's more sophisticated ways to find like what the most profitable decision is.
Yeah, for a good example, like, very often the solver is gonna continue with flush draws, even though it doesn't have the direct pot up.
Mm-hmm. That is a good example. Uh, so I kinda like a bet small here, I think, on two tone high.
Yeah.
Um, this is a good card. I think we might get to kinda go bananas on, just. So we have the five, the nine, which interact pretty well with the six and the seven, which is gonna kinda block his continues.
It changed nothing really. It's good for him. We're deep. Do you wanna create a monster here?
Well.
We did pick up equity though.
Yeah, that's kinda where I'm at, like it's.
Okay, no, 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 I'm fine with it. I'm fine. We pick up equity and then we get better nines to fold, maybe some ten eyes to fold. Probably.
Maybe a jack, maybe.
Probably an ace I might fold every, every blue moon.
Right, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, let's, let's try to convince something. So if we're gonna convince. On the seven turn, we need to leverage our ace, king, our, our king jacks, our pocket jacks. Our pocket sixes, stuff like that, so I think we just blast.
Eight point, okay, so it's going really big, it's going really big or checking.
Yeah, and if you go for it here, you need to come in.
Yes, you need to bring the heat, that's right.
Bring the heat. So we bring the heat. Oh, he calls, and he dongs, oh my, oh my goodness.
Oh, man. Wow. This, but this spot literally happened to me, my last session, in a very high equity spot and I was just so upset about it, because there was nothing I could do, other than click. Okay, good, there. I was gonna say like, I don't have, I didn't have the guts to pull the trigger like that, but yeah, good, good job there.
I knew, wow, I knew it. It's like, we're gonna try it, but it's uh, red brother. Yeah.
Raise.
But in game, that looks like a blocking bet.
I think, honest, those are hard bets to deal with. Like, so some small, the top card pairs, I think we can probably keep barreling.
Actually, I got, when they post Mad Affleck's video from last night, I gotta watch it, because it's specifically on that spot. Big blind, big blind versus button when they block that the river.
Don't block, but I was curious how often he does it with the jack or worse.
I don't think it's ever with a jack or worse.
So why do we jam?
I think, I think it's uh, he does it with complete airballs, like relevant blockers and like very strong hands.
Alright, well, airballs are worse, but.
I got a bit greedy here.
I see. I don't hate your line here, by the way. Uh, you gotta fold.
And what do you mean?
Fold, Louis.
No. Oh my god, how do you find a fold here? What's wrong with you? He has a king, I know it, but you're screwed.
I've looked at, dude, I've looked at these spots, man, and like, cause I am like you and I'm like, there's no way we find folds here, but after looking at them, it's like, you know, the rule like.
You have a spade?
I fold because we don't call for chops. And we're either beat here or it's a chop. I was just never. Well, if he has a nine.
Wow, what if he has like a deuce?
What if we have pocket tens? Like he shouldn't really do this with the nine, right? Don't we have still like tens, queens, jacks, stuff like that?
Yeah.
He has a queen, a king here very often, but does that mean we should fold?
You just don't call for chops.
Don't call for chops. Nine eight, without the spade.
Don't call for chops.
It's not making more money without this spade.
So there you got all your kings, your tens, your jacks and queens.
Look at his range though, let, let's see what he, let's see what this sicko's doing it with. Like Ken said, a deuce, I don't think it's ever a deuce. Well, it is a deuce sometimes, apparently. But uh, it's, it's a king a lot. But, uh, it's, it's a king a lot. It's a nine a lot. And like, if he's a real sicko, he's turning, he's targeting nine X with some of these under pairs, but. I don't know if this is reality because like Louis is kind of thinking here, who the, who the hell is gonna fold a nine? So it doesn't make sense to try to bluff people off a nine if they're never folding a nine.
So I would never fold a nine. I struggle to fold here a lot.
I fold here.
Even though it's very clear he has a king every time.
Yeah. We're just too deep in my mind, too. It's like, I don't wanna put the rest of the chips in. Uh, we might, alright, so a bet small to start. Let's start with that, I think. What do you think?
How small?
I'm a two, I'm a two guy. It's a one point two. I don't really split my low, low end of the range. Um, we have the king of hearts. I think we can keep going, you know? We have the six also. The six is blocking the open ender. I think this is a attractive combo to bluff with, maybe.
I agree. We get better kings to fold maybe sometimes.
I think we have to polarize if we bet, though. Sure, I wanna polarize this hand.
I'm with you. I'm eight point four or five point five. I'm one of the two. So it's even bigger. It's even bigger. So it's twelve. And I think it's because we have basically airballs here, so you really need to put the heat on. If you're gonna do it, but this is a fine size. Brick on the river, we're all in. Okay, nice hand. Good job. I'm pretty good at that line. Uh, Jack, seven, three, two-tone. This is kinda low and connected. Um, I think maybe checks here sometimes. I don't know.
I don't know about sizes here.
I think it's just saying that it's indifferent, like, you know, it's, it's just at that point of indifference with this kind of hand. It doesn't know what to do.
Definitely checking a lot on this board.
Yeah, I figured I'd have a decent amount of checks. That's why I just, when I bet, I just size.
A lot of gut shots, but it's not that bad. It's not that dry in between.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's exactly my, that was my thinking with it, right? It's two-tone. There's a lot of. High equity draws available, so. We probably need to, uh, bet sometimes.
Okay, so I still don't understand. Our strategy here.
Just difficult to implement the strategy. I mean, it's all over the place.
Well, I mean, like, look, the, the texture of the board is kind of. The texture of the board is kind of dictating what we do here. Like I said, there's a lot of high equity draws, a lot of gut shots available. There's a front door and a backdoor flush draw available. So our bet sizings are gonna need to be larger to make those hands indifferent, right? Like, if we're gonna try to get a, you know, three to a straight, three to a flush to fold, or, you know, a pair of threes to fold, or. An eight, nine to fold. A small bet's not gonna do it.
That portion of the strategy makes a lot of sense to me, like the. Flush draws, we check or we bet small. When we have the top part of it and when we have the bottom part of it, we always bet big. Because these get better aces to fold.
They have additional draws.
We are also unblocking all of the other draws in his range, so there's like a cooler effect there as well.
I think we see the same thing here as well.
Four, five, six have additional equity.
What about, uh, hearts? What are hearts doing? Backdoor.
They're polarizing more, right? So you see a lot more checking and you see a lot more of this like larger betting?
Yeah. Okay, and what about the other two suits?
Your airballs?
But then small, kind of.
So it's going big with its pairs. Like it's, it's value pairs, it's vulnerable pairs, and then it's doing like a lot of checking and betting small, I guess. The heuristic here that I'm seeing is like it likes these. When you can turn top pair with the queens and the kings. And you have a relevant blocker to the straight, like the fives and the sixes and the fours. Like, you can, you can kinda start. There's a lot of good turns you can keep barreling on. So like, if you gotta, if you got queen six, you can barrel on a five, you can barrel on a four. You can barrel on a queen.
Can barrel on any of card.
So you would want ideally to bet this flop one over card.
Yes.
And some form of interaction with, with could be a straight here.
Yes, uh, tha- that, that is the heuristic.
Okay.
It's very similar to the check raising heuristic.
You're betting into cap range almost.
Not almost, exactly.
Yeah.
Ace high, yeah, I would just range that small here. Uh, do you ever size up? How many of his flushes is he just flattening with on the flop is the question?
Every single spade, so I would go eight here.
I kinda wanna go, I was saying, how many ma- I was thinking how many made flushes?
Oh, he has a bunch. We'll still blast it.
Okay, I'm, I'm on, I'm in team camp. I'm in camp blast as well. I like eight point one five, I think, or five point, okay, five point four. Alright, we're done.
We got scanned.
Just Hollywood for a bit, so like you, you have a hard decision. What are we gonna do? What do we gotta do? Fold?
Jesus Christ. Ten.
He finds it with the ten. Look at this hot shot, just bluff or just value jamming into us on the river with the second nuts.
Yeah.
Raise. Uh, if this was a king and a six, we might be able to get a little out of line here, but I think this is just a fold. Oh, look at that, calls. Raise. Okay, alright, man, whatever. Raise, do it again, I dare you. Bet small. Alright, so, alright, so I was gonna say we might bet a little bit larger here now because it's low, low, low monotone.
Yeah, and we have pretty good card here.
I mean, yeah, we got like the, yeah, we got a pretty good card.
Louis, this is your special. Yeah.
They're clicking too fast, though. I'm surprised at the large bet.
Me too, me too, but it's a thing.
I would bet this. It's probably a fold in theory, but.
You got me.
Okay, we've been playing a lot of nine eight off on the button today. Um, Jack, high, two-tone. Pretty low. I'm a two guy here, I think.
Why you wanna size up?
Three point one, uh, we have spade, we have, uh, kind of our low, we kinda like low in range, but we still have like. We can pick up equity with straight draws as well, so.
You know, I wouldn't be surprised to see some larger betting here as well, but I think I'm, uh.
Locked up. We don't need to bet big here. What's the purpose of betting big?
We, I like betting small because we can't really turn direct better equity than a jack. Like, we're still like in the doghouse versus a jack. So I like betting small.
Ooh, that's real small.
And this is a turn we probably are gonna polarize.
And now we're polarizing, right?
Well, it's good for our hand. We picked up equity, but it's really good for him.
Yeah, he didn't dock, though. He missed the dock, so I'm gonna go like seven point nine.
I'm with Ken, seven point nine guy, or check, a chance.
Have a draw kind of that can't call a raise.
Nah, it's fine.
Yeah, it's alright. We got, I mean, we got nine high also, is, is my challenge with it. Okay, so we raise. Bet small.
Nope, they're really small.
Padded boards in position are gonna find a lot of the smallest bet size.
I kinda wanna bet, I kinda wanna bet, man. We got all the pairs. He doesn't really have pairs. Like, he, he has no pairs here, so it's like. Yeah, there's one deuce out there in the deck and then sure, he's got some tens, but he didn't check raise the flop either, so he's, he's kinda strapped on those as well, right?
So like four point five or what are you thinking?
I kinda wanna, I, I think four point five is a good size.
Yeah.
I love how triggered Ken is.
Can't raise?
Yes, you can.
I ain't.
I wouldn't, but, uh. Answer's always, you can always raise. Might be a fault. No, not falling.
No.
I was gonna say this one's close.
Uh, draw, redboard.
I would check.
I would check.
There's some slivers. That's a banter. I wanna get out of here, but now we just stick around. Okay.
It's not that bad.
Uh, I'm giving up, man. He could take it. I mean, we have an eight, we have a relevant blocker, I guess, but man.
Where's your heart, Ken? Where's your heart?
We have the straight here.
Oh, we have a straight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, never mind.
All in.
Alright.
Oh, we had a pair of sixes.
You need to work on your, uh, reading skills on the board, Ken.
Yeah, I gotta put my glasses on.
Ace I bar. Half a flush draw. Middle of the deck, I think we wanted that small. If we had like a worse jack, we would size up.
Wow, still sizing up, surprised.
Ace queen seven?
So I thought we would. Size down a little bit with the better ones, but not really. No, not much checking here on this board.
Ace queen nine, two-tone? Yeah, I mean, that's like, the flop's really good for us.
So our bet's small, the queen, queen X, want to bet small.
This continuing rate has.
Want to bet small. Everything else is mixing.
Like, if you have a pair or a queen, that's literally the, almost the entire check range. Everything else is like, and some nines. Everything else is just range betting.
Even pocket trees?
And then some draws.
Pocket threes gets plenty of better hands to fold, so it makes sense.
And it hits the term.
Um, I think we kinda go. Per, well, we only got twenty-one behind.
What did you do on the flop?
And then he calls, so when he calls a flop. He's never gonna fold an ace.
And we block spade draws. He's gonna be wanting to be folding when we're bluffing.
I mean, it doesn't matter. We're always gonna double barrel, right?
I think you double barrel and he just, uh, our villain doesn't have a lot of aces, cause he's check raising the stack depth top pair almost full frequency, right?
I was checking, though. I did say check, but.
I think it's. Yeah, I think it's.
With the jack blocks a lot of his floats, the spades block a lot of his floats, even the seven to some extent blocks some floats probably.
Yeah, Ken's right. Uh, look, look, look at the checking heuristic here. We're, we're blocking the hands we need him to fold. Through a double barrel, so.
So it's, it's like middle of the deck is checking, bottom is betting and top is bet. That's what I see.
Yeah, I, I don't think you can apply that to any board texture, though. Like, the fact that there's a queen nine is pretty influential on this eight, ten. Jack area, right? Like, if you put, if you change it to eight, like ace, queen, three, instead of a nine, I, I wonder if the texture would shift. Or like, move the queen to a.
That's a lot less, uh, big betting problem.
Yeah, yeah, the queen do the three of spades.
And you gotta change the turn. I'll lead a lot, I'll lead a decent amount with the board pairs of three.
Yeah, I don't know what we're doing here.
Well, you would just change the three to a deuce, something inconsequential. No, deuce is gonna bring the, uh, wheel straight. You wanna change it to a six. Six of clubs. That's a double flush draw. Okay, yeah, six is pretty inconsequential. So now look at the, uh, look at the range construction with your flush draws on the turn here. See if it's still similar to what it was. Okay, so. Now it's pulling from the bottom of the deck with the majority of your checks here. Like, the sixes are a pair. But. Well, I mean, the bottom is a bunch of, it's a bunch of pairs also. It's, it's like range betting almost. With the exception of a couple.
If you have a pair and a flush block, draw your check.
Yeah, a pair and a flush draw slows down. Everything else seems to kind of go. Either way, check at this SPR. It's just kinda, I think, Ken. Recognized that you wanna realize equity. Yeah, we can get out of the way now. So we bet. Um, small. We gotta continue. Yeah, we gotta continue. You gotta continue. You gotta continue. Check. Or do you always check? I think you check.
No, not on the king.
Man, honestly, a thin value is very intriguing to me because like, is he ever checking when the king pairs on the river with a king?
We, we, we gotta check because if we bet, we gotta bet like twenty.
Well, I mean, I do, we do have, we're supposed to bet like twenty-three or whatever, but I mean, I wonder if this ever does go like fifteen for thin value. I know the, the rule we kinda use.
Yeah, I would think like the majority of the value is probably going all in here also, like if you look at the range.
Probably, it holds true, though. You can't, you gotta, you can't.
Yeah, value. Super polar, so it's like you're either going for it or you're just gonna show it down. Uh, small bet, maybe?
One point two.
Yeah.
Pared board in position, I'll pay, usually get to just go small. Small size.
Well, for me, it's small, right?
Yeah. Use the small size in the polarized turns.
See bet? Do we ever size up here?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
And it's the heuristic that we said, the low suited ace are gonna bet bigger than the high ones because we get better aces to fold.
Well, yeah, you can turn top pair. You can turn a flush draw. You can turn some straight draws. You get better hands to fold. There's a lot of draws here. So, yeah, I can, I can see this.
Yeah, but big with that part of the deck. That's small with the upper part. Makes sense.
Raise. Um, so if this was five, six, we would continue. I don't know if it's gonna continue with the two gapper. We are on the button and sixty effective, so.
It's a small black, I would fold.
I think five, six continues there, but yeah.
I think you're right.
Yeah, for sure.
Uh-oh, this is like one of those magical hands. That might go kinda, okay, we fold.
I don't even open it.
Might not be as magic.
Wait, wait, you don't open king seven on the button?
No.
What?
King eight.
You're in it.
Yep.
King five.
No, no, no.
Uh, so this is middling connected. Uh, so this is middling connected two tone. I was gonna say, I think it might check some here, but betting's fine enough. Okay, this is getting gross.
Yeah, well, I'm lost, so I'm giving up.
I like checking also, I don't know, it might continue betting, but uh.
I don't have it in me.
I like, I like playing check here, I think.
He's got all these offsuit hands, I mean, showed away, but like, I don't right now.
Okay, can do anything you want. Well, look at him.
That's a fancy hand, look at that thing. Alright, so raise. Uh, jack six is too wide, I think we folds.
Oh, we found the king six.
I know, spicy. Um, okay, so. Do we bet larger here? It's two tones, so that's gonna push our sizing down, we're forty effective, I'm kind of a two guy here, I think I'm two.
Nope, I'm sizing up here because we're deep, we have a good top there. Okay.
Do we have our better queens? I I was thinking like there's probably a cutoff with this value of our queens.
If you made a rainbow, if you made a rainbow, I bet sizes would go up.
The ten starts to. Need a ten kicker or a jack.
Mostly small, ace queens, um. King, queens all small, though, it's weird, like ace queens will be, king, queen, small, queen, jacks, big, just weird.
Yeah, we don't have big sizes here, very much. So we.
He's got a lot of, he's got a lot of leads here, I would think.
Man, I kind of want to bet, okay, so this is the same thing, I kind of want to bet small here to check back the river, like.
Five is very good for him, it's a flush, flush are very good for him, we don't have a spade with a single spade, I'd say, okay.
Yeah.
Like, we, no, yeah, no, you could do it.
Could you buy rubber too?
See, this is gonna be hard to play on, like, he's gonna, he should, oh, one, he let us off the hook. Like, I feel like you're gonna get blasted here on the river sometimes, I'm never raising here, that's insane. Okay, wow, maybe not, it wants to raise even more.
LP knows the block bet, because he's in there block betting his pair of fives.
I'm doing that stuff all the time.
This is uh, this is right up his alley. And we get called by a six. Second pair, so I guess it makes sense, right? Ace high dry, small bet. Hmm, yeah, I was gonna say, I think I want to continue here, it's too dry, check. Or do you bet here? No, I think check, uh, if you bet, I think it's small, but I would say check. Look at deuces, or no, deuces is not a good.
Threes are betting a little bit.
Three, threes, it would be the example, if you wanted to extrapolate the sizing. So whatever, whatever blue is, so it's like, it's betting nine big blinds, so I mean, like. If you're gonna make.
The check is more EV, so it's probably not solved far enough.
Yeah.
Would be zero.
So we mostly double barrel with our aces and with our jacks.
Jack, well, yeah.
What is a nine here? Because a nine wants to play a lot.
Uh, well, it's an ace, king nine is just an airball. Queen nine is kind of just interacting with the straight, right? I guess it's just kind of like trying to set up for some bluff.
Maybe we're trying to get ten X hands to fold?
Nine, ten's a gutty, nine, eight is a gutty. Nine, six is an airball, nine, five is an airball, it's just pulling, yeah, I think it's, it's just trying to make better hands fold. Like, it's, it's just betting the bottom of the deck, right?
But nine X is like blue, right? What does it actually play?
Uh, you're getting sevens to fold. You're getting.
We get some ten, some ten X hands.
I get better nines to fold, king nine, queen nine.
Better nines and ten X.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sevens are indifferent. Okay. But uh, you you took bad, it's supposed to be a check, we just get, you get a better, yeah, you get a better handed fold, but it's a blender. Race. Um, two toe, jack high, you probably are gonna go maybe a little bit larger, because we're eighty effective. Maybe four, I think it's gonna be two and four split, primary four. Nope, I had it backwards, primaries two.
Yeah, maybe this is the reason.
Oh, yeah, we're too deep, I'll call.
Never folding.
What were you wanting to do, raise?
Yeah, I want to kick it, but we're too deep.
I think you're too deep with this hand for sure, um, I think you can find another bet here. The ten of spades is very valuable.
I'm checking.
We have a straight and a flush draw, so yeah, we have a lot of equity.
What kind of size do we go for?
It's tough, man, like. Are we value owning ourselves if we go too big? No. Just to check. Ah, we gotta raise this, right? Like, what is this?
We're gonna raise, yeah.
Yeah, big, all in, look at that. All in. All in.
They have one of the best blockers, that's for sure.
Race, can't fold, it's king deuce, right? Uh, do we ever raise this? No, it's too bad.
No, nothing.
Raise.
We block the king, so it's most likely to be a pocket king.
Uh, you might be able to three bet this at some frequency, or four bet, yeah, at some frequency, I like folding, though.
How often do you think it for bets?
The suited one, I think it's probably quarter frequency, uh, the offsuit is probably less than that.
So zero almost.
I say zero.
Probably.
Hey, why would you use king six off if you can use king six suited even more?
I'm wrong, I'm wrong about the offsuit branch, and I'm I'm wrong about the suited branch too, it doesn't really even have like. Some of these polar combos in there, it's just pulling from like the offsuit tens.
For betting with this kind of stuff?
No, not here, now, if it's hijack first button, uh, yes, I'm in there with a lot more of these kind of polar combos.
Yeah, then you're out of position also, so calling makes less sense.
Is that the kind of hand you've been forbidding me with?
No.
I was gonna say, on the button, since you mostly call like your aces and kings, so you're not really even forbidding that much at all.
I don't know, next time I'll say a four bet, I'll be suspicious.
And you're not really polarized, since you're not.
To be honest, I've been.
Range, so you can't polarize.
Don't worry, I know you're in it, you'll never three bet, four bet.
I've been just looking at my four bet ranges earlier this week, and um, I'm misapplying a bit. Bit, button versus big blind, when it's like hijack versus button. I mean, yeah, I was gonna say, I kind of want to go big.
Yeah, I know. There's a portion of the range drying here, not really. Yeah, we're trying.
Seven, five, you just need worse hands. I guess like, you want to block this, yeah. You want to have some interaction with the low cards, I guess, maybe, I don't know.
Why do their colors randomly change?
Because it's all in here.
Right. King ten, race. Alright, ten high two tone, um, it's gonna be small pretty frequently, especially with a combo like this.
I think it's gonna be bigger.
Tell you what. We're gonna try to mimic what pocket jack is doing sometimes.
Yeah, I don't know if I like to do it with this combo. Obviously, it's.
More big than small.
But uh, yeah.
Well, don't you click that call button, get out of here.
I'm not folding, we're in position, come on, guys.
My gosh, oh my gosh. What are we hoping for? What are we hoping for?
The king on the turn, the queen on the turn.
What are we?
A queen, a king.
The nine is not too bad.
An ace.
Okay, so let's say you pick up a gutty on the turn and you face this action, what do you do?
Great plan, great plan.
But he'll check a lot, too.
Only if it's an overcard, he's not supposed to bet a lot.
Okay, I think we can use some big sizings here. I wouldn't be surprised to see maybe some like nine point one five or some, something like that, maybe.
Out of your mind.
I, I, alright, so hear me out, hear me out, man, hear me out, okay, we got, we, we got three to a straight, three to a flush, we can make it, we can make top pair with the king. Like, it's a rainbow board. I think it's not such a crazy thing, maybe it's a bit, bit overzealous, maybe it's like a four.
I'm going.
But, I'll give you two options, two or four.
Okay, I, I want, two's never gonna be wrong, two is never gonna be wrong.
Okay.
But I think we want to do some bigger stuff here, look, like nine, one, five is not crazy, it's not crazy.
Yeah, I understand it.
Yeah, but you block uh, this continuation raise so much, and you have an overcard, uh, backdoors.
So your kings, queens, and aces, and that's some stuff.
So like, you see the behavior with queen five? Jack eight, or jack eight to a lesser degree.
Queen eight, ten eight.
Yeah. Alright, so this is, this is probably a check.
Check or bet?
Why? Why don't you check? Uh, I still like the worst run out.
Fine, it's fine, he let us off the hook, man.
Yeah, I mean, checking, but it's still the worst run out.
Alright, I think we're gonna wrap it up, I want to keep some time as well to review hands.